Call this meeting to order. Can I please have the opening statement, Rick?
As we gather the original territory of the Treaty Eight Nations to conduct the business of the District of Chatwin, we do so knowing that we are privileged to serve the citizens of this community, and we shall endeavor to conduct our business in the best interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if you have a late item, RA two. The Rotary Park Walking Track Upgrades will add to Reports for Action. Prior to adoption of the agenda, is there any new business?
Oh, my apologies, I do have something. District Chatwin councillor, mayor email contacts on our website.
Okay, adoption of the agenda?
So move.
Minutes from the previous meeting, July 7th, 2025. Any amendments or errors? Motion?
Motion received.
No delegations, no bylaws. Any committee or liaison reports? I'll start over here.
The Senior Citizens Housing Society had a meeting with David Cheech of the nonprofit portfolio manager for the Northern Area, he's from Prince George. It was a very informative meeting, he gave the group several ideas for funding of capital projects and ongoing operations. Also, David was the first bureaucrat I have ever heard compliment volunteer group, and he did it several times over the course of the meeting. Also, the annual general meeting for the Senior Citizens Housing Society is on Wednesday, the 23rd, at 7:00 PM at Little Prairie Haven. New members for the board are more than welcome.
Thank you. Councillor McDonald?
On July 10th, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting with Minister Forrest Robbie Comer and the Social Forest Nations alongside Mayor Katraye and Chamber of Commerce Director Naomi Larson. The discussion centered primarily on the priorities and vision of decibel leadership, particularly regarding forest, the future of forestry in the region. I appreciate the minister's attentiveness and respect he demonstrated towards the leadership as well as his openness to hearing their aspirations and long-term plans. While this meeting was focused on the needs of the social foundations, I'm grateful that Mr. Comer welcomed our presence and allowed for brief engagement during his visit. That said, it was unfortunate that the District of Chatwin did not receive a dedicated meeting during the minister's trip up there, despite allocation for long invitations extended by CEO of the company since the minister's appointment. As municipalities significantly impacted by an ongoing downturn of the forestry sector, including the permanent closure of our platform, Chatwin continues to seek constructive opportunities to engage with provincial leadership. Although Mayor Katraye was able to raise some key points during the visit, time was limited and our participation was a little bit possible lack in the record for that on our part. Moving forward, I hope that Chatwin will be included in future engagement plans. Our community economy reinforcing long-term planning remains closely tied to forestry, and we're eager to contribute to the larger overall general conversation. Minister Comer, the minister of the Strang, who stands here to think issues discussed in a genuine passion for the region and the health of the forestry sector in our area. I look forward to withdraw opportunities for meaningful dialogue and permission within ministry forums.
I do have a report in this, there's questions.
I just want to thank you for going, I know we all got short notice emails and couldn't go and I really appreciate it.
Okay, it's been a busy summer so far. FCM, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference in Ottawa, the mayor and I along with elected officials from our region were invited to attend dinner on Parliament Hill as our MP Bob Zimmer's guests. We received a tour of the House of Commons, had the opportunity to better understand how the legislative process works on a federal level. We were addressed by the Prime Minister during this conference, who stated that his main objective was to solve the issue of affordable housing. While listening, all I could think of was, why is the province of BC not getting a better chance to manage our forests and provide the lumber that our community members so eagerly want to harvest? Why did our premier address us in Prince George when he first came into power, state that his government would be pushing through permits, putting our forest industry people to work? And why is there such a huge disconnect between our nation and the province? And I believe that if federal housing is so important, then provincial forestry should be allowed to produce the lumber required to build such housing. And I'm going to mimic Councillor McDonald here because the conversation around our Minister of Forest, although really great that our mayor made it and you made it as well, Kayla, but we received such short notice to attend, and it was so disappointing as I'm traveling this country, talking about forests and letting people know our struggles, and you know, I just didn't get the opportunity to speak to the minister while he was right in our backwoods here, if you will. Anyhow, moving on to the DIT board meeting, so our Northern Development Initiative Trust, Regional Advisory Committee, we met virtually in June, we approved funding for various local projects. This trust supports projects that support economic development in the Northeast. And if any of my colleagues or community members would like direction on applying for these grants, please do contact me directly. And CLGA board meeting, at the most recent North Central Local Government Association Conference, I was voted in as a director at large. I attended my first board meeting of directors in Prince George in June. Our role as a regional board is to advocate on behalf of the Northern Communities, the resolutions that we struggle with are discussed, refined, and brought forward to UBCM. Chatwin Library Board Meeting, the operating budget was approved by the Peace River Regional District, final deficiencies are being corrected by Celtic Construction, and the new furniture has started arriving, so definitely go check out how the new library is turning out, looks pretty great. Canada Day festivities, so I walked in the Canada Day Parade, which is really actually quite a distance, I think it's got to be at least three kilometers, and we hustled along to keep in line with everyone else that was setting pace. It's pretty great to see our community come together like this, and I always feel that when we do come together, really voices that we are stronger together. And, oh, my last point here is just in regards to the Minister of Forest, I was highly disappointed, but at least we did have some conversation on behalf of mayor and council. Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else? I just want to thank you for those words, yeah, our council's very amazing and I'm always inspired and I'm so proud to be part of this because of how dedicated everybody is and doing the work that we do. Thank you. Discussion items. D11, DI1.
I'll make a motion that council authorize the mayor or alternate to attend the Dawson Free Exhibition and Stampede barbecue in Dawson Free, BC, August 6th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just reading and it says if we don't RSVP by July 18th, you are not eligible to participate in this event, and today's the 21st, so I'm not sure how that works.
Our assistant has already responded to the line.
Thank you. So all in favor? Correspondence. C11, or C1?
Motion to receive C1 and C2.
Any discussion on these letters? Oh, sorry, maybe this is why this is so close, probably. Any discussion on the letters?
I just want to say it's great because we did get the warning for the provision of free adrenaline auto injectors, it came a little bit late, but it looks like they're taking it to UBCM, so that is fantastic.
Yep, agreed, I was really excited to see that. All right, all in favor? Information items.
Motion to receive I1 through I6, second.
Anything to pull there? All in favor? All right, reports for action, so we have two. RA1 is about legal structure on 531945 A Street. You have one motion?
I'll make a motion that council authorize the home of the property at 531945 A Street, Chatwin, BC. The advisement council intends to file a notice with the land title office against the property located at 531945 A Street, Chatwin, BC, PID 030234522 lot 2, district lot 1809, Peace River Regional District, EPP 72983, formal legal structure contrary to the district's building law, and that the property owners be invited to just counsel and call this action now and to be held in the office for this to be advised.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a question, I know we've done this before, this is just basically so that the district isn't liable?
Yes. Yeah. Go ahead.
What's the cost of a building permit?
It's based on the cost of the structures, so it's a form game based, like, most of them probably in the 300, 400 dollar range.
Are they rebated after the construction has got?
Not the actual building permit, that's to cover or help cover the cost through the inspection service, if you understand what I mean.
Thank you.
Are there any other barriers associated with achieving building permit?
As long as the application meets the building code and those kind of things, the building inspector would sign off on it, and then it's just a matter of having the required inspections done during the timeframe of construction.
I just do need to say a couple of words because I'm such a fan of new construction, especially in a community where we're lacking new construction, and people willing to put forward their dollars to build. It's really, really hard to ignore this when the building inspector from the regional district has come and advised us to do so, so, and I also see that it could potentially cause issues in the future for such people to sell, and resale value could be affected, which I also don't really love that portion of it, but I think when the building inspector is advising us to do so, it comes down to a safety measure, and the safety for residents past, present, and future is really, I think, the point of this. So despite I'm doing this with apprehension, I also will be voting on it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Carrie? All right, our lead item, RA2 Rotary Park Walking Track Upgrades, contract award. Kohler Enterprises? Oh, sure.
So, it is past members of the Rotary Club, we are good every Qs ourselves.
Okay. Four of us? Can you hear me better?
I'll talk a little louder.
Here, I thought I was being so calm. A little too calm.
On representation of council or the Rotary Park Walking Track Upgrades contract of all our enterprises, limited in the amount of $796,646.76, and that the funds be allocated from the Peace River Agreement or the BC Climate Action Program. Second.
One of these.
Okay. I think in this case, the BC Climate Action Program may be more appropriate for this.
It's just good news though, right? We were saving quite a bit of money considering over $100,000 from last year's bid.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
I second it.
Go ahead.
Mine is actually, I don't know if this is going to change, but mine is just the difference between the allocation of Peace River Agreement or the BC Climate Action Program and what each fund is for and potentially in the future for, but I know that might change with the motion. Any questions answered?
No problem. Mine part hurts, for what that's worth, is that you use the climate action, it has a lot, a more narrow focus as to what it can be used for. PRA can technically use for whatever we want to use it for. The climate action does have some restrictions on it, so this needs multiplication of it. If something else comes up down the road that we would have normally used climate action, we can always use PRA for it after reactions.
Thank you, that answers my question.
With it decreasing, the, decreasing so much over time, is it to, is there a possibility it could decrease again and be within our budgeted amount in the near future? We only see one bid.
I guess that's a risk that you can take if you feel that lightly. My experience has been that it's prices you don't usually go down unless you can somehow trigger more bidders to participate, and we didn't get that this time, and could get a little bit of a reduction on it, so.
On the bid, what was the main discrepancy between the one for 2024 to this one just coming in now?
Yeah.
So, the design finding from very diverse of that was done, that's where it's been working really hard to be able to make it more efficient for the size that we have, but we took the 800 meter and put it into the walking tracks, and we lost a whole section that would be on the track, but it'll be in the track. So it reduced in size. The other thing that we did was just look at how we can test, and we tested the soils to see if you actually can watch. We needed to actually do the job, because last time we went based on the submissions that's down in the Rotary, but this time we actually tested what we needed for, so we specifically found what we needed.
Sounds like a good way to roll out of that. Thank you for that, which I am saying is a few bucks.
More than a few.
I'll ask another question, where is Kohler Enterprises from?
Kohler is based on certain.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Am I supposed to vote? If I did. Okay, oh, carried, thank you. Okay. Reports for information, our June accounts, big checklist.
Motion received.
Any discussion?
I'm just trying to find it. Oh, the Rocky Mountain Phoenix, it's on 7th Beach, Jameson.
Rocky Mountain Phoenix is fire safety equipment and a lot of equipment that the fire department buys comes from Rocky Mountain Phoenix, so.
Is a Clearview demolition for just over $68,000, was that for the demo of their old library?
That was drawn on for the demo, yes.
Oh, just the first portion?
Yeah, there's another $30,000, they came out after the beginning of July, it's a little further down the next check, right?
Very good, I was kind of hoping that they were that far under budget.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? New business, Gia has something?
Well, yeah, thank you, so I received a request from a community member that we have our email addresses as mayor and council readily available on the website, and from what I can tell, I couldn't see them anywhere, and I think our community members would like the opportunity to email us directly, and I'd like to make a motion that staff please do post our email addresses on the website for the community members.
Did we not discuss this not too long ago, and Steve said it was? Well, so first of all, I will second that motion.
Thank you.
So we can discuss it. Yes, that was my question just now, too, Dina. Or were those phone numbers? They might have been.
I think they maybe were.
I think it was phone numbers, and we can't get the website tomorrow and update that if that's what kind of wishes.
Okay. Okay, then you're gonna, that's all for me? All in favor? Okay, Carrie? Okay, public question period. If any members of the public wish to ask questions about topics discussed at today's session, this is your time to do so. State your name and address. Thanks, Ellen.
Rebecca Hallert, 531745 A Street. I'm just speaking to the question, I have a question for RA1 Legal Structure. My question pertains to all tenants that are also temporary structures in the municipality. Does every sign of the tenant shed have to pull a building permit and approve it as well in this community, for example, the mayor's? I just want clarity on temporary tenants.
I feel like that's a Kevin question.
There is, I'm not able to quote it at this point, but there is a size where it goes from having to have a permit or not having to have a permit, so I'm not sure what the square footage is, if there is a certain size of shed and they only have to go to building permits and we have to talk in this respect to get the exact size and stuff.
Can we email that answer to you?
It's stated in the bylaws that are, I just wanted to make sure that the councillor aware that there are quite a few structures in just a few areas that are not snow open, they're snow rated, for weight that are plastic and have actually collapsed already, so just leaving to RA1 on that. But yeah, emailing the information would be good, too, I have copies, but it's one clarity about the right information.
One question for corporate officer, Ms. Dennis, as I see that not only mail threads are attached to correspondence in RA1, I'm just wondering if you could provide me the copies sometime this week?
Yes.
Perfect.
And one more question, the building inspector did a phone call, just wondering if the district called the building inspector or resident.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, the building inspector actually received a phone call from a citizen.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That's it?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Lady Chair, 450347, I was wondering what the policy is for the district for notifying homeowners about construction occurring on homeowners' properties? What the policy and procedure is for that?
Can you just repeat that?
What the policy is, so like, homeowners need to apply for a permit and notify their constructing of the property, I'm wondering what is the other way around? What the policy is for the district to notify homeowners when there's construction occurring on their property, so district business occurring on homeowners' properties? What's the channel for notifying homeowners?
As a regular course business, the district would be doing construction on private individuals' property, so I'm not sure.
Just like the sidewalk.
Okay, well, the sidewalk would be on our property, not on the individual homeowner property.
Yes.
I mean, that would, that was where I would have hung up, was the idea that we were doing stuff on private property.
Not necessarily on the property, but where it would affect the private property, it was like the driveway, things like that.
I'm not sure if that pertains to what we're talking about now, because it has to be about what we're talking about in this meeting. And so we were talking about RA1, but I'm not sure if your question, it does, no, it's not part of this, but I can pass this on to Steve.
Sure.
And get him to look into that, but I believe that if it's district property, we don't, aside from what we do here, it's all public knowledge.
Okay, and then what is the purpose of the bylaw, there is being discussed, the building bylaw, in regards to obtaining permits? Like, what is the overall purpose of that, or shed structures?
What is the purpose of having a permit, you mean?
I guess the process of obtaining a permit, like, what is the overall purpose of that?
What is the, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, so what is the purpose of obtaining a permit when you want to build a property?
Like, preventing snow, but not those two things.
Part of it is to remove, correct me if I'm wrong, liability, I think that's the majority of part is, it's liable, if somebody buys the property and it has no permit, it hasn't been inspected, it may not be safe for the next people that buy it, and it removes us from liability that we've said that now, is this safe?
Do you know why the district would be responsible for that? I just assumed that it would fall under the property owner to be responsible for the things on their property, for example, sheds and stuff like that.
Civil litigation has got to the point where if anything happens on anybody's property, they're going to blame the municipality or people, it may, there's a lawsuit, and that's just the way it goes nowadays. The provincial government has passed down the building per, the building bylaws that we have the structures are supposed to be built to, we have to do inspection to make sure that they maintain that, and it all revolves around public safety at the end of the day.
Okay, so if it's about public safety, then those like canvas tent hats that would be over the square footage that require a permit, when those fall under the bylaw as well? Because there's quite a few around town that, of those canvas looking type hats that don't have permits, I'm sure.
I'm not sure, but what the qualifications are for which residents doesn't require permits, that's somebody that look into, aren't so strict about.
Okay. So, and just to go into the bylaws, so under section 3.8, where it talks about exemptions, so under a certain size doesn't require a permit, but over a certain size does, is that correct?
I believe that's the way that works, yes.
Okay, and then I also noticed in the notes, remember it was not taken in the last meeting, but it states I asked about organs in moonlight, so they could actually ask about organs in moonlights, what I asked was PRD, if they own the work center, and whether or not we had actually money to the work center for the heating process, so there was a state in the notes, I'm not sure here, council, doesn't appear, council actually caught that.
I didn't catch that.
Yeah, I didn't ask about organs in moonlight, it was about the charity, someone else correct that and updated.
I just have a question, did you ask about the checks to organs in moonlight?
No.
Was it lunches for the staff?
I asked about the ladies' family restaurant, and I believe there was Subway and a few other restaurants on there, but I didn't ask about the ones in the light, so I'm not really sure what information come from, but it's incorrect.
I just.
Is someone else correct that? Thank you. And then on June 20th, I was just wondering about the charge to T8N magazines or summer in the city. And then on June 20th, I was just wondering about the charge to T8N magazines or a city of that was for, was for that was something. T8N magazines, summer in the city.
Okay, that's someone advertising, um, with the visitor center.
So it's like a magazine from the visitor's center?
Um, it's on the finding, you know, you don't, it may be more, meaning part of competition. And it's true, I'm making this published, you know, or.
Okay. Is there a particular reason that discovered it was chosen for that?
We have two over time, so that's follow on the original.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Return it. So.
Just a second.
Great. Let's start off with, um, I guess the, the vision that you guys saw by the time you were in council seven years ago with this building. What was the vision of this building back then?
So back then, the vision was based on the elders and people in community who fantasized about having a building where we could all gather, a big enough space to accommodate everyone and more people. So that we could house bigger events and bring more people together because the current gym that we have is too small. And because we're growing in population, we needed to expand.
What was it like when you guys decided that, you know, you were going to go ahead and do it? Was there excitement? Were people nervous? What was that journey like?
So when the organization came together to talk about the idea becoming a reality, there was a lot of unknowns. Where is the money going to come from? How are we going to fund it? So before the excitement, there was worry and stress. And there was a lot of unanswered questions to make the idea a little uneasy. But over time, the questions started to get answers. And then the funding came, and then that's when the excitement came. Because now we have a way to navigate to the project.
What would you say was, um, one of the more challenging aspects of building this, uh, making this project a reality?
So the, the biggest challenge of all, of course, is the budget. Because you can plan so much, but then there's always something thrown into the mix where it was unexpected. So then you have to accommodate, you know, the budget and figure out how do you navigate this cost that we didn't foresee? And so it really did come down to how to manage the money. And we had a good enough contingency that all the outside things that we didn't expect and plan for, it, it worked out in the end. It all just fell into place and things happened and we're grateful for that.
Can you give us a, do you know numbers by any chance, just roughly like total cost of project? And how long did it take to build?
So the bill took three years, two, three years. Um, and the, the funding came from two different pots, three different pots. So in total, around 27 million. Can't give an exact number right off the top of my head, but, um, we had enormous help from the federal and provincial governments. And then the nation kicked in some of our dollars to make it all work out.
And when you look at the building here today, what does the building make you feel when you look at it?
Connection. It's all about connection. It makes me feel so happy that we have a place to connect. Because that's what this building is all about, is so we can bring people in, we can share, we can eat food together, discuss different things and connect. You know, same with Pemican Days, that's a place to share, to eat together, to have fun, but to connect. And I think this space is going to provide that on so many different levels.
Do you have any special areas of the building that are maybe in your heart, a bit of your favorite or anything that sticks out to you?
I do have a favorite room. It's the music room because you can make magic in a music room. We have a lot of musicians in community and I think that's a great space to encourage and develop the talent. And so if people want to record, that's an option. They can do that because that's what the music room does. And, you know, I think that's a wonderful, uh, element to have in the building is to be able to have a music program, um, teach people how to write a song. We have a stage now where they could perform. Like I think that kind of entertainment is really uplifting and that adds a whole element of fun. So I think that's my favorite.
And then anything else that you would like to add or maybe we missed in this, our conversation?
Anything to add?
Yeah, anything else you'd like to add?
Um, I'm just looking forward to the future and I'm so excited that all the teams got together to make this happen. And I'm so thrilled, uh, you know, the turnout that we had today. And I'm just really grateful and full of like happy emotions because today is the day that we were waiting for, for years. Like when the idea came around seven years ago and started discussing how are we going to do this? Back then it was a dream and now it's reality. So I'm thrilled. It's exciting. Back then it was a dream and now it's reality. So I'm thrilled. It's exciting.
Oh, what is gonna happen? A gold armor skeleton! She almost lost her own. Hey Kat. I am bound to pick with you.
Welcome to Chat TV Gaming.
Hi, I'm Gillian McDonald, a local Tim Hortons owner for Chatwind. Then it's Camp Day and all of our proceeds from hot and iced coffee go to the Tim's Foundation camps. Um, at the restaurants locally, we're doing a bunch of different incentives. Um, pick a sucker for a chance to win a prize. We are doing toss a tuna for prizing as well as selling camp day bracelets and camp day socks. So in the thirty-year history of Camp Day, we have nationally raised two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars and helped send over three-hundred thousand kids to camp between the ages of twelve and sixteen. Come on down to your local Tim Hortons or if you're in Chatwind, come see us. Uh, we have police officers washing windows in the drive-through lane, which is always a fun time. Please come and help us send a kid to camp.